All right, good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, August 13th, 2025. We are in the Eldon F. Marrera Board of Selectmen Meeting Room on the second floor. The time is 6:30 PM. At this time, before we stand for the pledge, I'd like to remind everybody that this meeting is being video recorded for future use. And at this point, anyone who can and is willing to stand for the pledge, please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Et rat.
So, good evening. We have a large agenda tonight, and we'll do our best to move through it, but at first, I just want to take a moment. Since our last meeting, the town lost an active employee. Sue Kent has been with the town 20-plus years, and she passed away over the last month or so. Sue was an integral part in the DPW. She was an integral part in a lot of the accounting that took place. If you were here earlier, you would have seen all these packets, and they were often prepared by Sue. So, we lost somebody near and dear to a lot of people in this room. So, I just want to express our condolences to everybody in Town Hall, everybody DPW, and everybody else who worked with her, as well as her family, and just say how sorry we are for their loss. So, I don't know. I'll open it up either.
Echo everything that Jeff just said. I had met with Sue recently, and she's a good person. She's really missed it. My condolences to the family and everyone that worked working with her.
Second that, third that.
Okay. All right. Moving along, we're going to jump around. We have a hard stop at 6:45 for a public hearing, but we have a large number of people in here, as we haven't met in probably a month or so, with different appointments in town. So, all good stuff coming up. So, first up on the list, we're going to jump, but would be to vote on a fire appointment, and that would be for Lieutenant William Choate to promote it to deputy chief. So, chief, if you want to...
Yeah, sure. Phil's with us, been with us for 24 years. He's been a stellar employee. We had a comprehensive assessment center done, and Phil came out on top, and we're happy to have him aboard, helping out start learning.
Super. Anything you'd like to chime in or add, not to put you on the spot?
No, I've been a time, like I said, 24 years. I've been a paramedic for 35, and just obviously my fire service. This is one of my goals before I retire, and it's been important to me, and I'm doing the best I can for the town.
Fantastic. Mike?
Oh, that's exciting. How many years you said?
35 as a medic and 24 on the department.
Oh, the department?
Yeah.
That's...
It's a long time.
That's a long time.
You know, I can see it over the hills.
I commend you and your family. I know it's not often easy. I know it's not often easy, but I commend you and your family. And congratulations, almost congratulations, we're going to read this thing off, but yeah.
I think we're in the formality stage here.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you for your service, your time. Thank you for your service and his time and your time and all of the sacrifices I'm sure you've had to make as a family, you know, to perform the job, you know, requirements of the job. So, thank you.
All right. Hearing nothing else, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of William Choate as deputy fire chief.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations to both of you, and thank you.
Thank you.
So, all right. Next on the list...
And you don't have to hang around if you don't want.
Next on the list is an appointment. We have two police appointments. We have an appointment for a special police officer for Earl J. Johnson. Chief, want to speak?
So, Earl's retired state trooper. He currently works as a trainer for MPTC. When we had reached out, I want to tap into his ability as a trainer. He holds all his certifications, he's a defensive tactics instructor, he's a CPR instructor, and a use of force instructor. So, that can supplement what we have. Super excited, because as you know, I look at our department like a team, and adding him to that team makes us better. So, I'm very excited to be able to bring him on. And he'll be a special police officer, so it'll be pretty much details and then training per diem as I need him.
Super.
Chief, I'm just going to say that if you're excited about it, I'm even more excited about it. He's not here to make me tell...
He's Army, though, Mike. He's not Marines.
He's Army. He serves his time.
Yeah, those are the guy.
Yeah. I'm excited.
I looked at his, you know, the list of, call it resume or accolades, or all his, it looks outstanding. If we can get him, we should get him.
Can't have someone like that out in the atmosphere and up around.
Yeah.
Yeah. It is impressive.
Hearing no other discussion, I'll make a motion to appoint Earl J. Johnson as special police officer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Super. Next, in front of us, we have Danny Riola.
R.
Ariola. I knew it. Told you I'd mess it up.
Told you I'd correct it.
You will have a nickname, by the way.
Oh, I think I know what it is.
I think you probably have one already, but we won't ask for that right now. But with that, chief, if you want to just...
Again, I'm very, very fortunate as the process, and I trust our process. I'm excited to say for this spot, we had 109 people take this test. And through the test, through the PT exam, through the screening, and through the selection committee, Danny was willing to come in on top. So, it was nice that I brought in all of our members of the department to make this decision. So, when I tell you that this process was exhaustive, exhausted if it was, and I'm super excited to bring him on. He brings a lot. He's a man of integrity, he's strong in his faith, and I just think he's a great person that will make a great cop. But again, it's just, but we're, our team's just getting better. We're getting stacked, so I'm super excited.
Not that it matters, just curious. Is this our first hire outside of civil service process?
Yeah, I know. So, I could have mentioned the height. No, we're good on that.
That's common, too.
He'll be our...
He was going to go there.
...third hire outside of civil service.
Okay.
But he is the first hire we've made once we adopted this current practice. So, once we went to the outside testing and all that, he is, he was our first.
Okay. Go on. Mike?
That's wonderful.
Danny, I don't know if, how excited you are about joining this...
Very.
...this team. I know that, I know a good amount of that, the people that work in that department, as well as the fire department, and I will say, we have an excellent team. So, congratulations on being chosen as the person to fill this one position. From the sounds of it, you're not going to let any of us down, and I hope you know that the board up here, we're going to have your back. We just need you to do your job. You know what I mean? We need you to do your job. Do it, do it to the best of your ability. Right on.
Thank you.
Marcy?
As usual, everything that needs to be said has been said. So, congratulations, welcome. Trust everything that Tim, you know, says and does, for the most part. So, if he's got your back, and he thinks you're the guy for the job, then I agree. So, good.
And I was just, I was going to echo that. Tim and this whole leadership group in that department that has many, many years. Soak up as much as you can, you know, just listen and learn as much as you can, and you'll be in great shape, because they've been doing that for everybody else there, and it's been working great. So, we wish you the best. No other discussion, I'll make a motion to appoint Danny Ariola, is that right? As, actually, Daniel, to be correct, as a police officer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
So, all right. Next is a vote to ratify David Farrell. Your employment has veterans, David. David, how are you?
Very good.
Awesome. We're excited. I was speaking with David prior to the meeting. We all speak individually, but David talked about some of your experience and what you've done, and I think you're, it sounds like you're going to be a great asset to the town, a great asset to our veterans. So, very excited, you know, as things change in that department, not that they weren't good, but you always want the opportunity to make it better and, you know, strengthen for our veterans, and it sounds like you are the person that can do that. So, I'm excited. And at this point, I'll turn it over to our veteran up here.
Yeah, I mean, you have that Eagle Globe and Anchor real tight to your chest, and that's where I keep mine. But at the end of the day, I mean, we're here to help all the veterans, and you have the full support of the board. I'm excited to see you in that role. I've heard your name already sprinkled a couple of times around town, and people are pretty excited to hear you in that position. So, I'm excited to see what you, what you do.
Echoing it off, welcome.
I'll go, I'm going to go to the right the next time.
Yeah, we'll see.
All right. So, with that in mind, if there's no other discussion, I'll make a motion to ratify David Farrell's employment as a veterans agent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Congratulations.
So, next on our list is Mackenzie Lewis.
Yes.
Okay. Fifty-fifty shot. I don't know how I was going to vote.
He's excited.
Mac, all right. I can handle Mac.
I like that.
So, you're here, we're looking to ratify your employment as a DPW labor.
Yes.
So, whatever, you don't look that old to have some of the resumes of some of the people that were sitting in front of you.
I look young, but I am. I'm 28, so I guess that is still young. But yeah, I worked for J.F. Stans, a local seven company up in Bullbrook. They do a lot of work in Boston, work on skyscrapers and stuff like that. I was a truck driver laborer for them, also a welder for them. My dad has a welding company, a shop in West Bridgewater off the road, so we do a lot of side work out there. So, we like to bring that to the table, you know, some, you know, basic tool can go to DPW. I'm also an all-around, you know, hard worker, and just wanted to prove myself to be a part of the community.
Super. Marcy, anything?
Love the attitude. I love the enthusiasm. You look just as excited to be here as you should be.
A little bit nervous, excited, though.
No, no, no need to be nervous. No need to be nervous, no. But absolutely, you look excited, it's appreciated, and we're happy to have you.
I appreciate it.
Good.
Mike?
I mean, you should, you should almost be in sales, man. You're just...
Yeah. I saw it a few times at home on the way here.
Good job.
No, but a great job. They have, again, DPW, you have a great team. We have a lot of great teams. I know it might sound like it's competitive, but this is a great place to work, and you're going to find that pretty quick. In a couple of weeks, I'll check, you know, you're going to probably tell me the same thing. Yeah, we're excited to have you.
Is this mom?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were whispering back and forth. I thought you guys were... I thought, oh, she came out to support you. All right, sorry, moving on.
All right. So, we're going to end it now, and I'll make a motion to ratify Mackenzie Lewis's employment as DPW labor.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome aboard, wish you the best.
Welcome.
Super. Next is a vote to ratify Francine Burns' employment as COA outreach.
So, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
None of the other people that need to be here, however, the lady that is here is the antique license, it is A.
Oh, okay.
So, we want to do that one, and then we'll have just enough time to go to our public hearing.
Awesome. We will do that. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Could I say something, please?
Sure.
I'm deaf, I don't know if I can hear.
Do you want to come up?
That's great, I just need to blower.
Yeah. There's a seat right here, if you want it.
I saw it.
That's the special hot seat.
I'm pretty loud.
You're good.
That was very polite of you. All right. So, we have a, on our, on our agenda this evening, we have a vote to approve an antique license application for secondhand sins located at 280 South Main Street.
Correct.
So, if you want to introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about what you're up to.
My name's Cynthia, hence the secondhand sins. I'm like a mixed...
Kind of wondered.
I love what I do, and I decided West Bridgewater because I like the town. The people of West Bridgewater, oh my gosh, can't get any better. I'm from Brockton. There's a, you know, a little bit different there. But I worked in a job, financial, where my boss said to me, if you stop looking out the window and gazing at people, you could get more work done. You quit, shut up.
Nice sister.
Super.
I love what I do.
That's wonderful. That is great.
I've reviewed your application. I have no immediate questions, Mike, kind of like you.
No questions, no?
All right.
Pretty straightforward.
Everything is in order with the office.
All inspections are done, or do we approve this based on anything else?
If you want to do it, subject to file inspections, but to my knowledge, they've all been done.
All right. Then I'll make a motion that we approve the antique license application for secondhand sins located at 280 South Main Street, pending any final approvals.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We wish you the best. Thank you for, thank you for doing business in West Bridgewater.
I'll be in. You'll see me.
Especially Christmas is coming.
Oh, I'll be in, you'll see me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I've got to open a public hearing, so we've got some to read here. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August 13th, 2025, at 6:45 PM, on the joint petition of Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid in Verizon, New England, to install one new pole at 484 West Street, West Bridgewater. The hearing will be held in Town Hall, Eldon Marrera Board of Selectmen Meeting Room, second floor, 65 North Main Street, West Bridgewater. Plans are available in the Selectmen's office, signed by Board of Selectmen Jeff Ryan, Chair. So, at this time, I'll take a motion, open hearing.
Motion, open hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second, aye. Good. All right. So, we have a public meeting open with about 12 pages of paperwork for one telephone pole.
We do, and it looks like, are you from Grede or from Verizon?
I'm from Grede.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'm Jared Aker, representing National Grid at 100 East Ashland Street, Brockton. We're requesting a new pole install, so we can install or reclose, which is just a protection and safety device that helps with the system reliability and safety for our crews.
It's not blocking, it's not in anybody's line of sight, not blocking anything, to my knowledge.
Not that I'm aware of.
No. I drove by there today, but I'm not going to tell you I found the right two other poles to be staring at, so I got to take your word for it at this point. Any discussion?
Ever.
No.
All right. At this point, entertain a motion to, I don't know, how am I making the motion here? I guess to approve the poll.
Yeah, approve the poll as presented.
Okay. Make a motion, approve the polls presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this moment, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Our existing shine counselor had resigned about a little over a month ago, and Francine has always been the assistant to that person. We did post for the job. There were outside applicants going through those pool of people. Francine was the best candidate, and so not only do I think that we're getting the best person for the job based on who applied, I think it's also fantastic that we can promote from within.
Yep.
So, with that, I would ask for the board's ratification on that decision.
Yeah, no, we've had some, just small, brief interaction with Francine, and I second she's very good, very, very personable, and, you know, done good. Mike, anything?
Nothing.
All right. So, at this point, I'll make a motion to ratify Francine Burns' employment as COA outreach coordinator slash shine coordinator. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's see if Ben will put the camera on himself today. The guy behind the camera never wants to be in front of the camera. But next on the agenda is a vote to ratify Ben Smith's employment contract as cable station manager.
Want to tell us a little about yourself, Ben?
He's not, he's not fighting for any of this, and he's not putting the camera on him, because I can see the live feed from where he's at. But with that being said, I'll take a moment, Ben, and say thank you for what you do do in town and recording these meetings and making it to so many other places, as I'm no longer shocked, but I think the first year or two in this, I was always surprised at the number of people that actually watched the meetings and comment. I thought I was the only one out there doing it, but apparently not. So, we're grateful for your efforts and what you produce. So, thank you. I'm happy that the Cable TV board decided to keep you. So, with that, I have no, you know, I read through the contract, I have no comment beyond that. I don't know.
Yeah, no.
So, at this point, we'll make a motion to ratify Ben Smith's employment contract as cable station manager.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, a vote to reclassify Jill Janowski as head administrative secretary.
So, Jill joined us about a year ago. She has done unbelievably amazing jobs. She is fantastic. She has excelled in every way. We did bring her in at a lower classification, because while she has ample experience in the municipal world, it was, I'm sorry, in the building world, it was not necessarily in a building environment. So, we brought her in a lower classification, made sure she could do the job. As I said earlier, she is not just a stellar employee, but she has excelled in every facet in every way, and as a result, a year later, we now are able to reclassify her. So, we'd be looking to reclassify her as head administrative secretary. However, I would ask that all the other appointments that you made, the effective dates were basically either today or a couple of days from now, depending on what HR does. This year will be retro to July 1st.
Now, I am, you know, speaking as, of the building department as a whole, I think my first year, I averaged three or four complaints a month, and as you know, I shared them with you. But I've heard nothing, nothing but good things. And usually, no news is good news, but when people are sharing good news with you, it's just that much better. So, hats off to Jill, David Moore Pryor, and then obviously Nick Now. We get, we get virtually no complaint, not to disrespect the other inspector that's in the room, but you were never...
She's doing a fantastic job from like two cents a nap.
We appreciate that.
You were, you were never a source of complaint from, well, from some people. We all know who I'm talking about.
Oops.
So, at this point, I will, I'll make a motion to reclassify Jill Janowski as head administrative secretary.
Retro to July 1st.
Retro, yeah, July 1st.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, vote to ratify Kristen Lynn's transfer from part-time principal secretary for the building department to full-time assistant town accountant.
So, when we brought Kristen in, she, we didn't, you know, she's, she was clearly qualified in many facets, but the only, she applied for the part-time position because it was available, that was in the building department. Going back to what you mentioned earlier, with the unfortunate, unexpected passing of Sue, is that we were in a bind, and Kristen really stepped up. She was able to transition over in a short period of time. She was able to come up to speed, and as you saw earlier with the copious amounts of documents that you had an opportunity to sign, that's because a lot of what Kathy Reed, our town accountant, and also what Kristen was able to do as well. So, I want to say first, thank you to Kristen for doing the work that she did. She has proven by actually doing the work that she's qualified for this, it gives us an opportunity to take what appears to be a really good, excellent employee and transition her from a part-time position to a full-time position that is already doing the job, and like I said, in a short period of time, has been able to acquire a lot of the skills that was needed. So, and then at the same time, I know we're talking about Kristen, we'll ask for a vote on that, but I really do also want to say thank you to Kathy Reed. She is our full-time accountant, but she's only allowed to work so many hours because she's a retired state employee, and she has just done an amazing amount of work in a really difficult situation over the past year, over the past month. And quite frankly, the hardest part of the year for her, because it's the turn of the fiscal year, so she's trying to close out and do her role as well. So, it's been a lot of stress on Kathy, a lot of stress on Kristen, and stress on others, and everybody's done a really good job. And so, specific to, in front of you, Kristen has more than earned the right to be able to transition from one position to the other.
I do have a question on the verbiage, and I'm sorry, I just noticed this now. Should there be any saying on building department in the title?
Nope. She's transferring from building to the full-time assistant town accountant.
Okay, so she's, she's not going to know anything with the building department or with DPW?
You mean DPW?
Yeah.
So, she is also an administrative clerical support person to DPW, but her official title in the clerical contract is the assistant town accountant.
Okay. I was just making sure that...
Good question. Any comments?
No.
I'm hearing nothing else, I'll make a motion to ratify Kristen Lynn's part, transfer from part-time principal secretary for the building department to full-time assistant town accountant.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
All of us.
Thank you.
Next is a vote to approve opioid funds for the school department for AD units and professional development.
So, per your policy, we have, first of all, as you know, we've been part of a nationwide lawsuit in reference to opiate funds. Those disbursement of funds are extremely limited. They are not general fund receipts, and they cannot be used for any and all town purposes. The Board of Selectmen about nine months ago put together a policy. As part of that policy, the Board of Health reviews the application, listens to the presentation, and then makes a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. In this particular case, the Board of Health heard the presentation from the school department. In this particular case, the Board of Health heard the presentation from the School Department. They have approved it and are recommending it for approval to the Board of Selectment now.
I have no issues, no comments.
Yeah, no issues.
It's a good thing, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll make a motion to approve the, uh, the opioid funds for the School Department for AD Units and Professional Development.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
For what that's worth, that was $15,000.
Yes.
All right, next, uh, vote to award kennel boarding contract to JM Pet Resort.
They are our current vendor, they do a really good job. We are required by state law to be able to board and house a dog that, um, nobody claims for a minimum of 10 days. Obviously, we wouldn't be able to do that in-house, we need an outside vendor. They have been our vendor for many, many years. Per procurement law, we can't just award it to them, we do have to go out to bid. So we went out to bid, they, um, they were, um, they're most responsive bidder from that standpoint as well. So it's a two-year contract in front of you that I would ask for your ratification.
Hearing no discussion, I'll make the motion to, um, to award the kennel boarding contract to JM Pet Resort.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, next on the agenda, vote to award, uh, surgery paper contracts, July 1st to June 30th, WB Mason.
That is correct, and just one piece of note, we had actually awarded this a couple of months ago to Spruce Homes. However, there was a clerical error in their submission. So, um, I am the Chair of Surgesage, which is 27 municipalities that all band together to try to get pricing a little bit lower. And so, uh, once we uncovered that clerical error, uh, we had to negate their proposal. Um, and now WB Mason was then the lowest bidder at that point.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to, uh, award the surgery paper contracts, July 1st to June 30th.
To WB Mason.
To WB Mason.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh, next, approve the meeting minutes for May 21st, 2025. Hearing no discussion, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for May 21st, 2025.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I'll just make the motion, accept the meeting minutes to June 17th, 2025 for review. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Uh, next is a vote, uh, to request a crosswalk at Buttonwood and North Elm. This is just safety to get some people, some students possibly across the street. There's no discussion, just make the motion.
Second.
So, all in favor? Bye.
Aye.
Uh, next, um, we'll pause and we'll, we'll move, because that one might be a little bit of a discussion. The next couple might be a little bit of discussion, and we have a, a joint meeting. Well, close enough, it says 6:59 on my watch. You're not early, you're late, right?
Well, so me.
So we have a joint meeting on the agenda at 7 o'clock with the Water Commissioners. And the first thing I do is, is, is turn it over to Chairman Cabral to open your meeting.
We hereby open the August 13th Joint Meeting for Selectment West Bush Water.
All right. So, I don't know, you know, this is a joint meeting. Chairman Cabral and I have spoken a couple of times, um, and, um, we think there might be some synergies, possibly some synergies and efficiencies with, um, maybe taking a look in the future with moving the Water Department into the DPW. And there's, there's time, and the timing for that is probably right, just in the sense that, um, as I understand it, the current water supervisor is probably retiring, uh, what, in the next year.
We have around 15 months.
Yep.
We have to retire, so if we were going to change anything, that was the time to retire.
Yeah, so I think the purpose of this meeting for me, and we don't get to discuss this other than here, so I can't speak for anybody else, but-
Us as well.
Yeah, we don't know the rules. But the purpose for me here is to see if, if both sides are interested in exploring this. And if we are interested in exploring this, we've got a lot, probably a lot of questions, we can develop some tonight. And then we probably, you know, need to bring the rest to Town Council. And have him discuss, or her, discuss how it could be done. And then, you know, at some point, we get into the nitty-gritty, but I think, for me today, I think it's, it's a worthy exploration, um, to see if it makes sense. It's, it seems to be, a lot of other towns and whatnot are, are set this way or have gone this way, honestly, I don't know. But we have, um, as we, I don't want to, you, I don't want to talk, we're talking about how you guys cut grass, they cut grass, how we do different, you know, there's, there's definitely some overlap and some things that go on. And there's, there's definitely some experience in the DPW that, you know, could benefit the Water Department and probably vice versa. So I think it's a worthy endeavor, but I'm going to stop talking, um, and just let, just let everybody else take this time.
Yeah, I, I would love to explore this option, just to see if it's something that would work, more so from a duplication of efforts and an efficiency standpoint, if it makes sense. I'm not, I'm not as close with the Water Department as you folks are, obviously. But I'd love to see if there's an opportunity to, um, have some efficiencies and some, less duplication of efforts and assets as well.
Echoing everything that they've said, I'd like to, uh, explore being efficient and streamlining these things. I know that, you know, there, there's, there are a lot of things that you guys or the Water Department does that the DPW can help out with, again, and vice versa. So I, I think it's a great idea to explore it, I know that there are going to be, you know, it's going to be a conversation back and forth about exactly how that's going to work and what that looks like. But, I mean, it sounds like it could be a good plan and, and, like, like Jeff said, I mean, Mike said, to avoid the duplication of efforts, you know what I mean? Everybody's doing things differently, but you're doing some of the same things, the paving and, and everything that DPW does, you can use some of their, I know I've been to a Water Department meeting where you were talking, I think, or I watched a Water Department meeting where Mark, you were mentioning about using some of the equipment, I think, from the DPW, or needing to rent equipment when DPW already has the equipment and stuff like that. So I think that that would be beneficial, so.
I think you'll save on a lot of buying.
Yeah.
It's just one, it's just one of the, I just, you guys got to work together. You know, if this guy can't do this, these guys should be teaching everybody, oh, you know, everybody knows how to do this, but you should all work together.
Yeah.
You know, and I, you know, there's so much.
As, as we were talking about, I'm, I'm not even thinking of it as much in terms of the efficiency portion of it, is I'm looking ahead, trying to figure out how we're going to hire a superintendent of the Water Department in 15 months. That's not going to be an easy thing to do with the size of our system. The type, right now, the type of work that's under our water superintendent's job description is typically what we see for a superintendent. So we're already starting, we're revising the job description, but it's not going to be an easy type of position to fill. And the side, the smaller the system, the harder it is. So if Public Works Director can take over a portion of that responsibilities that can get kind of put off for them, we'd still have an assistant superintendent-type person to strictly deal with the water, because now we're going to have two different water treatment plants that are up and running within the next couple of years. Those are specialized people, then they're going to have to be able to keep that. You don't want them being pulled at all possible for other things. That way, we can keep the treatment plant operation going better. I think there's a good, a pretty good possibility of being able to do that, focusing the Water Department employees more on the treatment, having the excavation stuff for a break done by the Public Works side, push, get them to get distribution licenses, which then allows them to do small game repairs, extensions, could be able to have a little bit more ability to do stuff by the town as opposed to having to, to do whatever. Devils in the details, how all of it breaks out, you know, how, how all the individual things get handled. But, I mean, it's, I would hate to be 12 months out from here and say, hey, we should have worked in for that. So I think at this point, it's probably a really good idea to figure, at least look in what all the requirements are, how people report, does it turn into a appointed water commission instead of an elected? Because if, um, I talked to David a little on the side about, I was the Public Works Director, and I'm covering both, I'm not going to have two elected boards down the road.
Yeah.
So that would put all of it feeding up through the selection. I think there's still more of a potential, you'd want to keep the water commission with things like city, setting rates, things like that, I don't think you guys want to take that stuff and talk with everything else.
No.
If you do, so I think there's definitely potential.
I, I think, I think that for all intents and purposes, we're trying to, um, the main reason I think we pulled this meeting together is to do like a 40,000-foot view, um, on seeing if we can, if, if it's a possibility, if you guys were open to the idea and the suggestion of, um, potentially, you know, seeing a combined effort in DPW. And from what it sounds like, it sounds like you guys have some pretty polite, I haven't heard much from John yet, but I'm-
He's been talking the whole time.
He's got plenty of comments, that guy.
I know John's got, I know John's got some comments, but-
Oh, he does.
I reserve comments right away.
But it sounds like, for the most part, like you guys are open to the idea to have like a feasibility study done, to see if it would be open, uh, if it was something that would work, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think at this point, we're, we're looking, you know, we're off to spend some money with Town Council, which would be foolishly spent if both sides weren't interested, so. To your point, I'm, I'm somewhere where you are, where it's probably similar to what Conservation is. Right, it's appointed committee, but obviously, they handle their own stuff and they go and there's the, you know, Tim is, Tim is a town employee, but, you know, still answers there, like, you know, it's, it exists. I, you know, without, again, it's all going to go to Town Council and see what can be done legally, and, you know, the enterprise fund and, and everything else, like, there's a million questions, but we can start getting some of them answered if it's-
Has anybody spoken to Phil at all, this idea at all, or, I mean, I, I would think it would be fine, because basically, everyone applied for that job, it's coming from a place that, that may add more things on. So I think that should be-
I mean, that, that would have to be part of the discussion, but-
I wouldn't see how, I think there'd be level in ability to, because that, Public Works Department's not really big. So that, I don't think that'd be a heavy lift to bring into it.
There's not a big pool of licenses that are available for this type of license.
Yeah.
Speak up.
There's not a large pool of different people that could apply for this position because of the licenses required.
Yeah.
So it's not like you can just have any person off the street, I mean, obviously, we've got licenses and we need qualifications.
Yeah.
And I think we have that in-house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And to what Art said, you know, having like an assistant superintendent basically to deal with the day-to-day stuff, if, if somebody, you know, like Phil were, to be able to oversee it and hold the licenses, then that's how that could work, I think. That's obviously a conversation to be had, but, um, that, that seems like a start, you know? That seems like a start.
By all honesty, you guys got a good guy.
Oh, yeah.
He's got all the licenses, and I think he's, he's good.
So-
He turned some towns around.
So, um, just to answer the question, because it was posed, um, I have not had a conversation with Phil. I thought it would be unfair to have the conversation with Phil in case in this room there was a decision not to move forward. I have no doubt, based on Phil's qualifications of the past and what we have seen directly today, that he could do the job, he's qualified to do the job, that he's licensed to do the job. But to answer your question, I've not spoken to him, I thought it would be unfair until we had this conversation. And the second part to that, although I have no doubt that he would be the right person for the job if we do this, I want to make sure that we're moving forward doing this, because we think that the process is the right application for the, for the town, not just because of Phil, but because it's the right thing. And then Phil neatly fits into that package, but we're not doing it for him, we're doing it for the best interest of the town.
And, and down the road, it might make it easier, A, to attract a new superintendent for Public Works, when B decides that he moves on, and better issue as far as now, that superintendent of water, you've got a bigger pool to draw from, because there are going to be more people like that. It's a more interesting job if they're in charge of highway treatment, treat the streets, trees, and water, as opposed to what, I think, I mean, I think it makes sense, it might help us as in future recruit. It was a tough process going through, for the DPW, right?
Yeah.
And I went through those interviews, it was a lot of easy things to get. And I think the more we put underneath that person, that makes it a more attractive job.
Also, I think with the, these other people, both departments, they're working together, just makes the table better, instead of, hey, today I'm cutting bushes or whatever. I just think you could teach them, they're definitely capable for doing that stuff.
Cross-training, I like it.
So, I think we've heard from everybody at this point, with Chairman Cabral, I would say that it's worthy of moving forward, now that you speak.
So what I'll do is I'll engage with Town Council, because we'll have to find out, one, what the process is to do it. You currently are an elected board, so, um, so we'll have to figure out what the process is, whether that's town meeting, whether that's referendum, whether that's both. I'll engage with Town Council, and we'll get some answers, and we'll get them back to you.
I think, because Mark just got elected, no matter what, he should have to sit in that room on a Monday night, even if he's by himself for the night, to finish the full three years.
I'll, I'll make sure Town Council speaks though.
You didn't run for nothing, Mark.
So, um, but with that in mind, thank you for coming to us, I guess, we can come to you the next time.
I mean, if you both, if you both parties want to take a formal vote, say that you're, you would like to move forward with soliciting an opinion from Town Council, that's not hurtful, so that's fine.
Sure.
Wants to get the ball rolling?
Yeah.
Motion that we set about feasibility site to, to give it the advantage or disadvantage of whatever the water department, how it would have found it, some of the, lack of that.
So I just want to make sure, I'm, so I don't think that Town Council's the right person that's going to be able to come up with the positives and the negatives, he's going to just focus on the law. The law is going to be, this is how you do it.
Well, that's why I-
This is the process, so if, are you sure okay with that? Is that if, if we want someone to study the positives and the negatives, we'd probably have to bring in outside consultant to do that. But to be honest with you, I think we have so much talent, including in this room and outside this room, that want to be part of that process, we're going to be able to bring people in and ask those questions and get those answers. But again, I want to just make sure that I'm asking Council to do what I think I'm asking them to do.
We've got a motion from the one, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make the same motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Right on, exciting.
I like working together.
I like changes.
Thank you guys, though, honestly, for coming in.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah.
Take a vote for our adjournment.
Thank you for doing all your work, John.
You guys, you gotta close your meeting.
Oh, you guys gotta close your meeting again.
John, you gotta close your meeting.
Motion to adjourn at- Wait, wait one second.
Uh-oh, still open.
That wasn't on yours. The agenda that you posted for the joint, the joint, the agenda we had from your office included a line for something called PFS funds. I think that's what Kerry got from your office. We don't have, I don't care, we don't have to.
Oh, yeah, no, we've only got joint meeting.
Didn't want us to go out, and then you'd notice we were missing.
Yeah. No, not on here, not on here tonight. Motion to adjourn at 7:13. Second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you all.
Thank you, guys, have a good night.
Thank you, looking forward to it. All right. Moving along on the agenda, next was a, a vote to consider a land donation for Zero Manley Street.
So this came in from a business who owns land in town, the property is landlocked. We do not have access to it, it's about two acres, most of it is wet, and quite frankly, for the most part, would not be usable to the town. And whenever we can, we try to acquire land, especially if it's adjacent to existing town land, but we don't have access, we'd have to get an easement, purchase of the property, we'd have to figure a way to access it. And then once we do, there wouldn't be anything that we could do with it. So I did reach out to Conservation Commission, the Conservation Commission reviewed it, and they recommended that the Board of Selectment decline the option. And so as a result, I will make that recommendation to the Board as well.
Yeah, second, there's no value to it. There's just, there's, there's no value to it, we actually would lose by, by accepting it, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree.
Any comments? All right. So at this point, we'll make a motion, we're not gonna-
I would ask you to take a vote for the decline the option.
Okay. I'd like to, I'll make a motion to consider land donation, to, I'm going to make the motion to adopt the land, uh, at Zero Manley Street, and then we can all vote no, if we choose to, right? Accept the land donation, and then we vote no?
I make the motion to reject the land donation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody second?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Amen.
All of us, aye.
I was doing it backwards. All right, uh, next on the agenda, special, uh, permit, uh, modifications, site plan review for the Planning Board, this is just a recommendation to the Planning Board for Zero and 315 Manley Street for a trailer storage warehouse.
So this facility currently already has a special permit and is operating. It has three distinct separate parcels. Lease area one and lease area two currently are in use, lease area three is not. Apparently, what they're requesting to do is that they would be looking to have propane storage tanks, so that way they could service Amazon propane trucks. So instead of a truck having to go to the gas station to fill up, they would drive in here, take off one tank, put on another tank, because that's how, what propels those vehicles. As, as the chairman said, it will go before the Planning Board for its review. And these are the, these are comments to, to them from the Board.
So my only comment in reviewing the application, um, just was that there would be porta-potties there, for lack of better, and I just, I think, you know, if we're gonna, if it's going to be something built there and done, it should probably be a facility, not a, not a porta-potty. So that would be my comment to the Planning Board. Somebody working there full-time?
Mm-hmm, no, I don't disagree. But it's just a comment.
Mike, anything there?
I have-
So.
Propane vehicles.
Yep. So that would be, that would be, I don't know, in favor of the comment, not in favor of the comment?
Oh, I'm in favor of the comment, and I don't really have anything additional, so.
Mike, anything, are we good with that? If I, so, make a recommendation to the Planning Board that, um, we don't have a particular issue with the, with the site other than, um, the lack of facilities. I don't think that porta-potty should be the only thing on that facility for the next five years while they're changing propane tanks. That done, the next is a site plan review, special permit for the ZBA at 482 East Center Street for pet grooming. I will tell you that I attended the ZBA meeting, and this was approved. So we, uh, we were behind in our meeting, and as a result, I don't know if we even need to make a recommendation at this point, because it's already, it's already going forward, it sounded really good. There were a couple of neighbors that were concerned about boarding and things like that, none of that's taking place, so. It was strictly grooming, dog in, dog out, every day, kind of thing. So, somebody who's been doing it for a long time in another town. And then the next, uh, special, uh, permit modification, again, recommendation for the Planning Board for one component park, just a warehouse. And I think this is just adding to the warehouse, the property?
No, this is actually going to extend the antenna 10 feet.
Oh, jeez, I keep messing this one up.
That's okay, so, um, so really, they're looking to do two items. One is, is that they would be looking to extend the existing antenna 10 feet further up in the air. I think most of us all agree.
I have Verizon, I have one bar, if that 10 feet gives me two bars, I'm in favor.
And we're probably about 112 inches from the antenna. But in any event, it is to extend the existing antenna 10 feet, and then also ground-mounted, there'd be a couple of other antennas installed with supporting, you know, some supporting infrastructure with it as well.
Yeah, I mean, my, my first comment is I wish the flagpole antenna was never located where it is. But with that being said, and it's already there, I don't think 10 feet makes a difference to it, one way or the other.
What's going on the ground and where, is it going to, because that parking area is already kind of tight.
Yeah, I don't know. The way I envision it is it's going to surround the existing antenna, but I don't have that level of detail.
Okay.
Okay.
Full disclosure, I have been notified because I am a, in a butter to this property. So, I, I have been notified about that. So, my comments or opinions are of my own, but I don't have any really. Honestly, I don't have a problem with extending it ten feet. Again, to your comment, Jeff, I wasn't a resident when they put that tower in and I know that the residents on my street were against it at that time and I probably would have been against it as well, but since it's already there, another ten feet and it's still well below the 180, right? Like, our, our maximum is 180. This is only going to extend it to 130. So, I, I personally don't have a problem with it.
Yeah. My, my point is we, we only have so many locations in town that I would describe as picturesque. And First Church is one of them. And that does get in picture. And so, you know, again, I wish it wasn't there. But knowing that it's already there, ten feet, it's, I don't know how.
It's already in the way.
Yeah. It's there. So, I have no issue with this, I guess. Well, I've spoken about my issue is, but I have no issues with, with the extension. Let the planning board do the rest. So, I'll make our recommendation, I'll make a, a motion that we, we recommend this. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right. I want to quickly review because we jumped around. I don't think I've missed anything in the first section.
Mm-mm. You did good.
Tried to check everything off this time. So, with that in mind, we go move on to communications and reports from boards, commissions, and town officials. Fortunately, we have a vote to accept Marco Burl resignation from the Municipal Building Needs Committee. So, I don't, I don't, I know what the committee is. I don't know that I've ever met this person or.
No, and quite frankly, we've done a really good job in funding, doing capital budget requests. So, while the Municipal Building Needs Committee, I'm glad it exists and there is existing funding there. For the most part, they have not had to do a lot of work over the last couple of years. And again, I think that's a tribute to a lot of people in town, the department heads who work to make sure their buildings stay updated and don't have major last-minute unforeseen concerns.
Super. So, I'll make a motion to accept Marco's resignation from the Municipal Building Needs Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next two sections, we have no, no items. It's correspondence from the public to determine a course of action and public comment as the, everybody has left the room. So, at this point, I will turn it over to the town administrator.
Yep. So, you'll recall that with the Lincoln Street project, that they are building a new road so that way we have a four-way traditional intersection at 106 and Crescent on one side and Lincoln on the other. There is going to be a legal land swap between the existing road that we own and the new road that they currently own. They will swap it. The Board approved this a year ago. However, the project has not been complete. So, at this point, because this agreement has expired upon advice of town council in their council, we are looking to extend it until December 15th. So, I would ask that you would just, you would approve the swap agreement as presented.
So, I'll make a motion to, to approve the swap agreement as it's amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we, real quick, just on that, because the project is dragged on and, you know, I drive it every day. I think most of us do or bounce through it. Just to be clear, the holdup, as I understand it, is just the public utilities and moving the poles.
That is correct.
And we are at the, we are at the mercy of the public utility. And we've called, they've called, we've all made efforts to try to speed that process along. And I think just our, our utilities move as they move.
That is correct. And look, we're frustrated. There's no doubt the residents are frustrated. I've been in touch with some of the local businesses. They're frustrated. And I also want people to understand, the actual developer is really frustrated because they've shelled out literally $30 million and they cannot rent, lease, move forward with trying to recoup any of that expenditure until this project is complete. So, everybody is frustrated. Everybody's on the same page. We're all moving in the same direction, attempting to get the last public utility out there so they can move the poles. Because the alternative is for us to actually stop building the road and have a couple of poles in the middle, which is just not safe, not advisable. And not to mention, I would hate to see any road work done and then the utility damages it and then they'd have to go back and nobody's going to go back because of the money. So, so we are at their mercy. I will tell you, our last correspondence claims that we are anticipating that by the end of August, you're talking a couple of more weeks, if it stays true to schedule, is that they, that is, that is when they are scheduled to complete that. And so, we're looking at probably an October timeframe for full completion. But again, we all know those things can be a moving target.
I just, I want people to know that, you know, obviously, the town's motivated to get it done. The builder's motivated to get it done. And, you know, we are just, unfortunately, we're at the mercy of.
We promise we're trying.
So, I just know it comes up often. So, thank you.
No, thank you. You're welcome. So, FY25 has ended. As you know, we always have to transfer money for snow and ice so we can cover that deficit. But again, I want to say that we have really good department heads that stay within budget and we have an internal process in place to make sure they do. And as you'll see, we only have two other budgets that went over, extremely small amounts. The data processing is $54, which is actually a rounding issue in a, in a salary just because it's 52.4 versus 52.2 weeks. And then the library was a total of $241. So, the total transfer that we would be looking for actually is $240,0295. I noticed that there's an error on the left-hand side, the 240, the 295 is not carried. So, we'll redo that. I'll have you sign it. But the total amount is $240,0295. So, I would ask that the vote would be to move $240,0295 from our benefits budget, 9100, to the data processing, snow and ice and library respective budgets to offset their deficiencies.
I'll make that motion. Second? Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then Finance Committee will meet next week and then they'll take their vote as well. The next one is in reference to OCPC. As we all know, former Selectman Marrera was a very longtime OCPC delegate. Bobby's reasons, he is no longer our delegate. Mike has done a really nice job as, as the alternative. The problem is, is that while he's still an alternative, he can't vote. And, and so, you know, obviously, we're hoping to be able to correct that. And, and so, with that said, it's whoever wants it, but I believe Mike is, would like it. And, and so, as a result, I would ask for a vote of the Board to appoint either Mike or if somebody else is interested, to have that conversation vote.
Is that you, sir?
It's yours if you want it.
I'll stay on the board.
Thank you.
Make a motion.
Quickly.
Changes.
I will second Marcy's motion to make Mike the delegate for OCPC.
Thank you. Next one is really a whole bunch of FYIs. So, first FYIs in reference to the Finance Committee. Since Mike mentioned earlier he likes change, here's another one that I think is, is going to be a positive one as well. So, we went to town meeting in May. In May, we changed our bylaw. I think we all understood there was some cumbersomeness to the previous existing one. And so, in September, it is now by, it's prescriptive in the bylaw that in September, the Board of Selectmen will meet. They will do it as a joint meeting with a town moderator and with the town clerk. The five of you are voters and at that point, you will make an appointment to the Finance Committee. As of right now, we have one opening and we do have one qualified candidate who has applied. Anybody else that is interested in applying, please go to the website, download the form, contact Christine in the Selectmen's Office. I will be looking to bring this to the Board of Selectmen. Ideally, it's your first meeting in September, which I believe, believe is September 6. And part of that, which we'll discuss later, is that we will be looking to have an October town meeting. And so, we will have to have a fully seated Finance Committee. That way, they can review what's going to be before town meeting sometime in October. The next one is the municipal aggregation report. Again, this has turned out to be a lot of work, but I will tell you that I think we are always looking for ways that we can save our residents money. And you could see that in this past quarter that collectively, our residents saved about $118,000 by just participating in the aggregation. And over the past four quarters, it has been nearly a million dollars and that does not include the first quarter that you see up there as well. So, this has been a substantial savings to residents that have been able to participate in it. So, I'm glad that we're doing it. And, you know, when our contract is up, I'll probably be looking forward to bringing it to the Board and reviewing it again.
I will tell you, I had sticker shock this, with my last electric bill. And I dug in a little bit and this saved me about, I think it was $47, $48 last month. I had one hell of a month. I have somebody that works from home, air conditioning, multiple heat waves. But.
And for the record, that's you.
Not all the time. I'll blame it on somebody else, not pointing at you. But, so, thank you. I mean, that, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to quantify. It's not as hard to quantify when your bill's so darn big and you've gone through so many hours to, to look at what the current grid rate is and what, and what our aggregate rate is. It was, I wish to, I wish, I wish I didn't save that much because I wouldn't have spent that much to begin with. But nonetheless, it was significant savings this month. So, it's a, you know, again, it's a great program. Those of us that were in town when it started were automatically enrolled. Those of us that have, those of you that have moved in since, you should really think about enrolling. It, it saves you money.
What year did that start?
2018.
Oh, then I'm automatically enrolled?
You should be.
Hmm?
So, and I've looked, I haven't looked recently, but I did look at different points about, you know, going out my own constellation energy. There are several that. And the town was always incredibly competitive and, and I don't have to do anything, you know?
No. When we go out to bid, we legitimately go out to bid and get it, we receive in quite a few bids because quite frankly, that end user, which in this case is direct energy, they are securing millions and millions of kilowatts, which is, everybody wants, right? I mean, anybody, say for in sales, you'd rather have one big massive account that you get once versus having to go out there and try to solicit a million individual accounts. So, so we, you know, people want us. And fortunately, it's worked. The next one is just an FYI on a fundraiser that we signed off that we'll use at town hall this weekend. FYI, the state aid report has, the final report has been released. So, I put together, here's an easy cheat sheet that you could see what we received last year and then what each conference between the governors, the House, and also the, the Conference Committee, what they came up with. At the end of the day, you'll see that our total estimated receipts from the state went up $141,000. Most of that is school choice. So, it's not like that's a, that's a real lot of money. But it's $141,000 or about what a 1.5% increase year-over-year. It's not sustainable. And we met with Senator Driscoll earlier this month, which I'll turn over to Jeff in a moment, but we certainly had this conversation with him and presented these facts to him. If there's going to be a lot of state requirements and state mandates and all the other things, and we have to make sure we get funding for that. So, with that said, the receipts, although it's always nice to get more year-over-year, it's only 1.54%. And the real problem is, is that there's also charges from the state. So, whenever you hear a local delegation or a state delegation or the governor talk about, oh, we have funded so much, they never actually talk about the fact that they also charge us. So, these are all the charges that are compelled to be paid from the state of, that are compelled from the town of West Bridgewater to the state of Massachusetts. And you could see in this case, those charges have gone up $238,000 or 30% year-over-year. So, recall, we received $141,000 more. We're paying $238,000 more. So, we are actually paying the state $90,000, or it's a net loss year-over-year. And that's being made up for from the West Bridgewater taxpayer. There is no other source. That's where it's coming from. And so, there's nothing we can do. We met with the Senator, which I know Jeff will talk about in a moment, but those are the facts. And, and so, I think that whenever we have an opportunity to be able to highlight this and whenever residents have an opportunity to see it and they can highlight it to the delegation as well, I would ask that they do so. And here it is. So, Jeff, if you want to jump from there?
Sure. I mean, we sat probably two, three weeks ago at this point. We sat, I think it was a Wednesday morning, in this room with Senator Driscoll for a couple hours. It was, you know, kind of our first time meeting with him. So, it was a little bit about, let me start first by saying thank you to the Senator for actually sitting and having the time, coming alone just to sit and talk with us and have a good conversation. So, it was good to meet with him. It was good to get, get kind of understanding, you know, what's important to him, what he's working on and us, to have the opportunity to also express back what's important to us. And, you know, to summarize that meeting, what's important to us is like knock, knock it off with the state mandates, the unfunded mandates in a polite way. I mean, but, and I think David did a great job talking that there's two ways for that to happen. One, right, we, we obviously brought the sheet up and discussed that sort of the lack of funds that we received and disappointment in that, especially when there's new taxes and everything else coming out that's supposed to come back, millionaire tax, things along those lines. All that money is supposed to come back into towns and clearly, it's not making it here. And then the other part is just, just a variety of things that get passed from Beacon Hill back in this direction that, that things that need to take action on, things that need to be done, and then there's no funding to do it. So, he was receptive. He understood that. He has sat in our chair in some capacity, you know, so it's not, it's not an unfamiliar spot to be in. We talked in detail about MBTA and how frustrating, MBTA, how's zoning and how frustrating that is for a town of our size as, you know, 100, we don't have probably any apartment building that's more than 30, 40 units. I don't know what Riverbend, what any one of those buildings are. But nonetheless, none of them come close to what, you know, what, what will be regulated or allowed is up to 150, 160 units and how that just doesn't, doesn't tie in. He understands that and he's, he's, he certainly hears the frustration that comes, comes from it with a lot of smaller towns and how it was presented. It sounded like, you know, it sounds like it's, it's a tough thing to conquer in Beacon Hill because they are, they are very well and very obviously committed to increasing housing. But, you know, I don't know if I'm leaving anything big out, David, but, you know, good conversation. He definitely listened. He definitely took notes. We took some notes, exchanged phone numbers. And I like to think it's the start of, you know, building a relationship with our new Senator and going from there. So, certainly worthwhile time. And again, I think it was an open, honest conversation. So, it was good. You know, it wasn't, he wasn't just coming in to fluff. He was coming in to listen. And again, I felt like it was a good conversation. So, I'm, I'm grateful that he took the time to do it. And I hope in the long run, West Bridgewater gets to be a little better from it. So.
Keep his ear.
Yeah.
No, I agree with you. Next one is, is that recently, I received a letter from U.S. Representative Lynch. There is, I'm not exactly sure the pure motivation behind this, except that there seems to be concern about flooding, or at least this is an area of concern from, from, from U.S. Rep. Lynch's office. So, he has reached out to us. I presented the letter to you. Next week, the fire chief has already pulled the data and we are going to meet with him and his representative as well. And we'll see what he has in mind. I don't know if he has funding in mind. I don't know if he's looking to try to do something else from a resiliency plan. I'm not exactly sure what, what we're going to do. But again, just presenting it to the Board that we'll be in touch with him. We will, we have already responded. We will meet with him and then whatever, if there's, if there's something that comes of it, we'll report it back to the Board.
Yeah. I read that. My, my initial thoughts were, do we have the right rescue equipment? Should a river flood, stream flood to do what we need to do? And then, you know, I don't know beyond that. I'm not really sure. It sounds like it's impacted some other towns big.
Yeah. I mean, the hope is that they'll give us funding for a ladder truck. The.
I'm sorry. I just, real quick question. He was just referencing federal funding, collaborate to obtain federal funding is basically the motivation.
That's what it appears to be. So, so again, I only know it's here. So, we'll see. But I think that Jeff is entirely right. Is I think he's got, the real question is going to be, what are our real concerns and how do we have the tools and the resources to be able to mitigate against it?
Yeah. I was, and the, the site thing always stuck in the back of my head is, is there funding there to, to have something that, is there's a machine that cleans out culverts and there's stuff that we can do proactively at a time that we could possibly purchase for the time?
Yep.
Preventive, right? More than, than reactive.
Right. Exactly.
And along that, when you said funding, it brought me back to Senator Driscoll. So, I know we moved on from that, but to go back, I think the other piece that came out of that conversation was just that the state is not really releasing funds or doing anything till October. Because the state has a budget, the budget's been approved, but they're all very concerned as to cuts coming from Washington and how that. as to cuts coming from Washington and how that'll impact the budget. So, as much as we have this and we have that, everything's kind of on hold. Those numbers could potentially change.
Which means that 1.54% might actually become lower.
Yes.
Or the, that the charges may actually go up.
Yeah.
The next is in reference to MBTA. Look at, there's been a handful of lawsuits. All the lawsuits have gone in the favor of the state. A byproduct of that is that, my opinion, is that the Attorney General and the Governor has become more emboldened. And what I mean by that is, is that when the original passage of MBTA happened, there was two things that have changed. One is, is that it said at that point that the Governor's Office may impose penalties through not releasing grants. And those grants were spelled out and for the most part, they were basically in three distinct buckets. But the key word is "may." That was signed under a different administration and the new administration has come in and the "may" has become a "shall." And so, obviously, the Governor has made it a mission to make sure that there is going to be compliance with the law. And, and so therefore, as we know, in the Milton case and in other cases, that they've already taken a proactive approach in not releasing funding in reference to grants. The second part to that is, is that the Supreme Judicial Court in the Milton case released back in February and or March, stated that the Attorney General's Office had enforcement capabilities, but did not define what that is and to my knowledge is not also defined in the statute. We all know that the Attorney General has the blanket authority to enforce laws, but usually, like you get a speeding ticket, it spells out what your fine will be. And again, it's prescriptive. And to the, my knowledge, this doesn't exist, but she now has this blanket authority or believes that she has some blanket authority to commence enforcement action. So, this letter has come out. We have received it because although we are legally compliant until the end of the year, the expectation is, is that we need to be compliant by the end of the year. Because I can tell you in speaking to my counterpart, somebody passed the MBTA Act, none of them received this letter. I'm not saying that it's not on the website. I'm not saying it's not been distributed, but we specifically received it. And so it's not, to my knowledge, others have not. And so she refers to the fact that it's five years after original passage. I think that's a little unfair because there was lawsuits, there was changes and updates in the law, and there had to be regulatory approval and, and so all of those took time as well. In any event, the end of the day, we have two choices, which we'll be looking to make in October, is that we'll bring it to town meeting and town meeting can vote yes and be compliant, or we vote no and we find out what enforcement action is. And I just don't see how that, that's beneficial. So, with that said, I've placed it on here. We have already started looking at dates in October that in, at one of your September meetings, we will bring to you and then we will have to vote to open the warrant. I would like to try to make that meeting as minimalistic as possible. We know we also have the ADU law that we have to, we have to change as well with our bylaw to make sure it's consistent with the, with state law. So, we're looking at just probably do those two zoning and maybe one or two other small items. But in any event, I'm just letting you know, this did come out and I think the letter speaks for itself. National Grid reached out to me as well. They have a, a consumer advocate division. And to their credit, what they would like to do is they would like to hold advocacy events in local towns and actually go over people's bills and try to determine if there's any way that they can actually save people money. How that plays out, what that means, I don't think they could have cameras of your house. But, but anyway, they're willing to do it. So we already said yes. We weren't going to, I think we said yes in about six minutes. So I think that this is, can only be beneficial to residents. We would be looking to hold the event probably at the Senior Center, the Council on Aging. Marilyn Mather, I've already talked to her. She's been in contact with them and they're already looking at dates. And whenever we do have a date, then I'll report it back to the board and we'll make sure the public gets noticed.
Yeah, it'd be good too, because they are going through town. It happened to me yesterday. They installed the smart meter. And with that, we're supposed to be able to get more information too, as to how much energy we're consuming on any day and what's going on. So, I think, I think there's prob- it's a good time. There's probably going to be questions from that.
I got a question today. I got sent a picture of a National Grid truck and said, "What do you think this is about?" And I said, "They're just replacing meters and stuff." So, people are already asking. They're in town. They're, they're moving around and they're being noticed.
They've sent, they've sent at least three pieces of mail.
Emails and text messages and yeah.
It went from sort of the old spinning meter to just a digital readout. But I guess there, that talks to the mothership somewhere somehow and you can, you can know where you stand on any given day, actually. So, I don't know if that's good or bad, but...
Public Safety Day that the Police Department, the Fire Department have settled on September 14th. So again, just an FYI. We do not have a flyer from them yet. Once we do have a flyer, I'll make sure it gets forwarded to all three of you individually. Employee Appreciation Day, we had originally tentatively settled on September 19th at a previous meeting. However, I will tell you that date is no longer going to actually work. So, I don't know as to whether or not you want to, we could discuss it tonight. We could discuss it at a future meeting. We have always been doing it on Friday, so I don't know if we want to look at the following Friday or a different day. And also, we should start having the conversation. Over the past couple of years, we've had ice cream truck, we have grilled, we have had the Council on Aging host it. So I also think whether it's tonight or a different night, we should start discussing what you really want to do as a board as well. Or, you know, appoint one person and that person and I can talk and then that way we can do it in between meetings.
I like that whole potluck thing.
I vote that Mike does all the cooking.
I could do...
100% of the cooking and we just get to sit and eat.
How many people?
I don't know, like 300?
Mike, no.
No, I liked the potluck last year too. I thought that was good. I don't know. I'd be in favor of, of doing that again because...
Yeah, I think we all kind of brought our own little favorites last year and it was fun.
Exactly. I'll bring some Fiesta's rice.
So, looking at the calendars, anybody have anything, September 12th or 26th? Not knowing the availability of, I think the Council on Aging, I don't want to speak, but I would, I thought that worked well.
It does. I, I will tell you, I think that the best setup is that we do it at the Council on Aging. The Council on Aging can supply, you know, utensils and napkins and that type of stuff. It also supplies a really, really nice sitting area, both outside and inside. So therefore, if it rains, it's cold, it's warm, it's hot, whatever, it's all taken care of. There's already a grill there. So if there's anything that you want to grill, like it's just, the infrastructure is there. It's always been a really nice event. So unless the board has any objections, I do think that's probably what we should focus on, focus on again.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was a great place to do it. They have a kitchen, again, the seating area and everything was great.
We did, I think before you, I think it was Denise and I at that point, but we did ice cream on a cold day.
Yeah, well, I remember a few years ago, we were holding it at the, I remember Anthony was grilling. It was at the Council on Aging before the ice cream too. So, there had been years prior.
Yeah, I like that setting. So...
Yeah, same.
Do you have, if you're looking at calendars, any, I guess you can check with David, Phil, ask David, Phil David in later, but...
I mean, between those two dates, I think...
12th and 26th.
I was going to recommend the 26th only because it gives Marilyn a little bit more time to prepare. And then again, I'll have to reach out to her and make sure she doesn't already have any programming that day. But obviously, the more notice that she has, the better.
Yeah. I mean, I'll make whatever work, but yeah.
Okay. I'm blocking it off a little bit. All right, David, that concludes your notes. Are you, one more?
Yep, I just have one more. So it also, lastly, just really is an FYI to the board. It really recently, was actually yesterday, but came to my attention that there was a clerical error that was made on the Barrett's application for mini wrestling. And that event's going to be held this Friday. I'm sorry, this Monday, 8:18. And it turns out that the entire application stated August 19th and that it's for August 18th. And so they had the wrong date. However, I did reach out to the general manager. We also pulled the video. We watched the meeting and it is clear as day because he references multiple times that the date is going to be held on a Monday because a Monday evening is a slow time of the year during the summer. In fact, there was a specific question from you, from, from Marcy to saying, "When will this be held?" And he was crystal clear that it would be on Monday evening. So it's just a clerical error. So, obviously, it's already ticketed. It's already sold. It's already been, you know, all the advertising's been done. There's no need to change anything or vote on anything. I'm just informing the board that it was a simple clerical error. So that way, if you happen to one day get bored and you want to go through the file and wonder why the date doesn't match, that is the reason. I did have him put it in writing and we have placed that, that written clerical error and omission, submission in the file as well, just so we have it.
Diving eyes and crossing t's. I like it.
All right, so the last item on the agenda is an executive session pursuant to Chapter MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Exception 3, to discuss strategy with respect to ongoing litigation, specifically National Prescription Opioid Litigation. So, I would like to entertain a motion to enter an executive session, not to return to open session, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, specifically the nap, specifically the National Opioid, jeez, lawsuit the town is a party to, since my opinion is chair. Strategizing in open session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. I need a roll call vote.
Perez, yes.
Lee, yes.
Ryan, yes.